The Select Board, I want to thank them for their service to our town and surrounding towns, the whole area. And if anything...
I would just ask that the Select Board authorize our administrative assistant to send a letter of not only recognition but thanks to those three individuals. I'm guessing that that'll be part of our little thing that we're going to on Sunday night.
Yeah, so there are three certificates that Sandy has printed out for you guys to sign for them.
Okay.
So, and those will be presented on Sunday. I don't know if the chief will have you guys present them or if he'll present them.
Well, I'm sure he'll let us know what we're supposed to do, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that if we could move to, I think it's one of the things further on in the agenda under reports is correspondence from the Quabon Regional School District regarding after-school programming. And I think Cheryl is here for that purpose.
I am. I'm not here for the nuisance dog letter.
Thanks.
I noticed I got put on right before that, though.
I moved you guys up on the agenda because Jessica Bennett had said you were gonna come on April 19. And so when I got the letter, I thought that it was just for them to review the letter and then you guys were gonna come on April 19. But now I see, and I adjusted that so you guys can, or you can speak on that.
But I don't know. He's got 12 night meetings this month.
I know.
Yeah.
Hey, all I have to say, yeah, sure. I can't wait for Wednesday night to do a do-over.
Do-over? Well, maybe Dr. Allen will keep us awake with this.
Listen, we better hope Dr. Allen's still with us. It sounds awful morose.
I would say...
That he wins the election.
We should wait for Greg before we start this conversation.
This one, you think? Okay.
How's he doing?
He is going to be on Zoom with us.
Yeah, he's gonna, he hasn't been feeling well, so. We could do wage authorizations.
Yeah, great idea. We've got a few wage authorizations today.
I move approval of the wage authorizations forwarded to us by our acting chief of Ryan Walsh, part-time police officer for $21.50 per hour. Emily Walker, an on-call firefighter at $17.80 an hour.
Great. I'll second that motion for those wage authorizations. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will also, election workers, I think we could, I would move approval of Suzanne Musnicki to, from 213 Dana Road to assist as an election worker. One appropriate?
I will second that. So, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And maybe we could look at some of these...
Town property.
Town property requests. First, we've got a request to use the town hall on Wednesday, April 6th, from 2 to 5th. That's the day after tomorrow. That is Chief Henry Redcloud.
I think maybe we should wait for Greg on that one, too, just in case he has anything to say about this.
I may have to abstain from that anyway due to the fact that, you know, I'm a museum person.
Don't say that, too, love. Don't say that, too, love. They're off to get ya.
Oh, they're really not. What they're asking for is that it's fair and reasonable. It's just that this isn't necessarily the chief we're gonna deal with. We could do Barry Lyons Club boot drive, I would suspect.
So, we've got the Barry Lyons Club wants to do a boot drive on...
September something.
Sep- April 30th, Saturday, April 30th, at 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon in South Berry and also Concert Way.
I move approval.
Great. Any further discussion on this? I'll call for a vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would suspect the common vitrular license for Captain Tees. Where is Captain Tees?
It's gonna be in Becky's Bistro.
Oh.
Great. And...
We have all the paperwork for this?
We've got all the paperwork in order on this?
It's, it needs to be signed, too.
Okay, okay. Great. Well, I'll move approval on this common vitrular inholder license for Captain Tees.
Second?
Great. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
So, you think Greg would like to hear about preschool stuff or before and after-school programming?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, Cheryl.
That's okay.
Because we have a lot of other stuff that he, you know, definitely, you know, building inspector, ambulance contract.
Right.
Snow and ice stuff, job descriptions. Hi, Chief.
Good evening. How are you?
Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Nobody's gonna say that to me Wednesday night.
Again, fine.
Well, you know, you think everybody's gonna say, "Hey, Laurie, thanks for coming."
I missed you last night. You were everywhere. I didn't...
Well, I just, I sent Sheila a couple text messages. She just sent...
I felt like a war vet thrown back into the visions of the past.
In the past, in the past, in the past, in the past. How's Maine doing? I know. Well, it'll be better as the weather gets a little better. Other kids? I shouldn't call them kids anymore. I know. Ooh, 28.
I know. Jeremy took 28.
Is he still running his business or...
He's trying to buy the farm.
Oh, gosh, he's really...
He got proof from the loan. Now we're dealing with a subject issue.
Yeah, that's always fun. You got a lot of land, at least, though.
25 acres.
Yeah. And how's that woman? Is she, like, being helpful?
She's like, maybe something here is known as a difficulty.
Oh, yeah.
She refuses to do the subject.
Oh, well, yeah. Got it. I'm in recess anyway, so, until such time as it's...
Dalton's going to Georgia.
For?
To go to school to be an electrical lineman.
Oh, cool for him.
Wow.
Tough job. Tough job.
He's Georgia, right?
Wow. All I gotta tell him is he'll have the strongest thighs he's ever had in his life.
I think he felt a little that way because he's a new boy for the first time. Took him a week to recover.
Is Greg in with us yet?
Yep.
Oh, he's right now.
Hi, Greg. Is that Greg?
Yep.
How you doing?
Oh, good. We have Quabon here for that before and after-school program. And we took care of the fire chief thing. We took care of wage authorizations, recognition stuff. Otherwise, we saved everything else for you.
So, we're gonna jump right in with the after-school program?
Well, we could, just because the person is here who's representing the school district. I mean, she can wait, but it seemed kind of pointless to have her wait.
Well, yeah, it's the first thing I see on the agenda here anyways.
It is?
New business.
We moved it up.
Yeah, we had moved it up because she was coming in person.
I'm sorry. I didn't print it first.
Okay, we're good then. There isn't another new business. I don't see it.
I didn't...
That's a, that's an update.
Oh, you didn't redo the agenda?
I didn't redo the spreadsheet. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I guess, I think so. Greg, we all set?
Yeah, I'd get my tablet with the agenda pulled up so I can use my laptop.
Greg, I would just tell you that we cannot see you at all. All we see is like a shadow of a person. So, it's hard, I can't, I can't see your face to say, "Are you saying, yeah, go ahead?" Or, "Are you saying, shut up?" Or, "What are you saying?" Because I really can't see you. That's okay. I can hear you.
If you can hear me, that's what counts.
Okay, because the light's behind you. Okay.
Yeah, I have a window behind me and I can try to turn sideways a little. It'll get rid of it, but I doubt it. Just another window over there. Any better?
Yes, that's better. I can see your face.
Much better.
Much better.
Much better.
All right. Until the sun goes down, then we'll lose it again.
Okay. Cheryl?
Okay. Do I assume correctly that everyone has seen the email that Dr. Muir sent out last week? Okay, we thought it would be best to go to each town. She's at OCAM tonight while I'm here to bring this issue to the Select Board for approval because our lease does say we shouldn't be leasing the building without prior approval of the Select Board. So, what we'd like to do is, what we have done, actually, is we've issued an RFP to see if there's any interest out there. And having an outdoor, an outside agency operate our before-school and after-school program, it's got a very long title. It's actually before-school, after-school, during school breaks, and in the summer, and for February, April, and December vacation periods.
So, they would be taking over the one in Hubbardstown, the one in Hardwick?
Actually, there isn't in Hardwick right now. Right now, we only have one in Ruggles Lane and Hubbardstown. And what we're trying to do is put one in each elementary school and also the middle school since grade six is there now. So, if you have any questions, I brought my RFP with me. But that's basically why we're going around to each of the towns, just getting the approval of the Select Boards, to sublet a portion of the building that's not for regular school use.
I mean, I know there's a need in the community.
As I understand, we have pl- no, sorry. As I understand, we have plenty of room in all the elementary schools. We still gotta get a...
This is happening, this is happening actually after-school, not during the, during hours that schools in session. So, right now, we operate our own program where we hire all the individuals. So, students are able to come to the elementary schools as early as 6:30, before school starts at 8:30, and they're allowed to stay after-school until 6:00 p.m. So, it's not conflicting with any school activities.
I'm saying, don't we have enough space in the school that we can have dedicated rooms for them? So, it's not like they interfere with anything anyways? Don't we have the school, we're working at a small, low enough capacity that they could lease a room or something?
No, that's actually not the way that we have it planned. Usually, they use the cafeteria spaces and the gym space.
Right.
And you have the outside organization?
Because there's a lot of requests for that for people in town.
And we have written the RFP such that those don't, that every, in all of our languages for when our school buildings are being used by outside agencies or by the public is that school activities take precedent. So, we would work, if we had a, if we had a program and there was a town meeting in the gym, we would make arrangements for them to be in another part of the building. Sorry, Mr. Clark, you have a question?
So, you're looking to expand what you're already doing in Hubbardstown's other towns?
Well, a similar program. We have it in Ruggles Lane right now, and we have it in Hubbardstown right now. But we, we have that program. That's a district program with district staff and district curriculum. This is having an outside agency that do this for a living, put a program in each one of the elementary schools and the middle school.
Has it been difficult to keep personnel?
It's been very, very difficult to keep personnel, especially through the COVID procedure that everybody went through. But also because we mostly rely on college students. And then, so they come for the summer program, and then they're gone. And then they come back for the winter break, the February break, the April break. But then during the year, we don't have enough staff. Right now, there's about 60-plus students in the Hubbardstown program and 45 in the Ruggles Lane.
I mean, do you get, do they pay you an amount or do we just give them the building for free?
No, we don't give them the building for free. The way in which we structured our RFP, and this is after much research that I did on other RFPs that were out there, we set a baseline rent amount, but also left an opportunity for them to bid on a, like, competitive basis, the rent. We're more interested in getting the right program for our kids. Another part of that, we have, since we did an RFP, we have all this, like, this evaluative criteria that we have to go by. One of those is the prices to our families, whether or not there's discounts if they have multiple students in the program, if there's discounts if they come more than one, two, or three days, that type of thing. So, we're evaluating all of that along with the curriculum that comes with the program.
What sort of expenses involved right now for families to participate? And how will that change under a, you know, I would assume it's gonna go up in some fashion?
That may not, that may not, that may not be true. The Dudley-Chartwood Regional School District put this program into place this year, so I contacted that business manager because I've known him for a number of years. And actually, the prices that they bid on for that program are less than our parents are paying now. The way in which our pricing goes right now for families, it matters whether you come in only in the morning, only in the afternoon, in the morning and the afternoon, if you have multiple children, whatever. But just to give you an idea, if your child was to come five days a week, morning and afternoon session, it would be $475 a month for one student. So, I don't have my calculator to break that down. But the prices, what we're hoping is to have a tiered structure, and that's actually in our RFP as well, is that we want to see a tiered structure by the number of days you go and the number of kids that you have in a program. And it doesn't matter whether your child's in Ruggles Lane and Hardwick. You have one in each. Or Ruggles Lane and the middle school, say, that counts as two kids in the programs with that discounted value. So, it's not necessarily that we're gonna have increased prices for our parents. We're actually hoping they'll be lower.
So, do you think, have you got any bidders yet? I mean, it's not till next fall, so you've got some time.
No, actually, why we released, and this was in Dr. Muir's email that wrote for her. So, the reason we put the RFP out is it takes a long time for advertising and everything. The bids aren't due till May 8.
Okay.
And if we have any interest, we're having a site visit in each school on Thursday.
Okay.
And then we'll make a determination in May. What we tried to do is make sure that we'll have one, something open for the first of next year's, next school year. So, we'll be going through the summary with our own program, which will, will most likely be at Ruggles Lane or the middle high school. But I need an update on the Ruggles Lane parking lot project to make that decision.
Yep.
Because we're unsure of where that project stands right now.
Okay. We have a meeting with DPW next Monday, right, Greg? So, we could ask about that.
Right. I think they were planning to try to do it, you know, this, this coming year. And I don't know if they've talked to you. They need to talk with you about the timing of over summer or over April break or when they plan to. But we did fund it, especially, before special. We funded it with CARES Act funds.
Right.
So, it's fully funded and going to be done. It's just a matter of, you know, getting solid communication between the school and DPW. And perhaps it might help if someone came and attended the DPW meeting, that we're not doing this chasing our tailgate of discussing when it should be done, what's best for it.
Well, that might be the only...
When it should be, next, next Monday.
Next Monday, I'm in a meeting, and so is Dr. Muir. So, that's, that's difficult. But I, I was surprised to see when we had, this is going off topic, but we, when you had your special town meeting, Dr. Muir was there, and actually, the DPW director was asking her when the project was gonna happen. And we didn't even know there was funding yet. So, we don't have very good communication.
Okay, well, Greg and I can work on that.
Right.
Because I doubt it can happen for April. It needs to go up to bid in the summer. We just, we just need to, we just need to know whether it's gonna happen this summer or not because we really would like to have our program there.
It, it doesn't go up to bid. I believe it's just under our agreements with the companies that we have for the other wage agreements.
You'll be able to bid asphalt.
We're on top of full of services. So, that's a lot of question.
The con...
It's a question of scheduling.
Right. Well, let's get together.
Okay. Well, we have a meeting with next Monday and make, we can really push the, you know, the question, when, and hold people somewhat accountable to that because whatever we could do in April vacation is limited. It's only four days of workdays, right?
Well, actually, it's three because of the holiday, Patriots' Day holiday.
Oh, yeah. And then it's right after Easter to boot.
No, we don't have any Easter. We don't get holiday time for Easter, but...
Yeah, well, Monday is, yeah, would be Patriots' Day, I guess.
I forgot that Patriots' Day was that week.
Okay.
So, if DPW's not planning it already, we're most likely looking at summer break.
Okay. Well, that's good because this is the program that would be in place and so, okay. Okay, any other questions on this that I can add to that?
Do you need, do you need a vote?
We would like a vote. And just for, like, the record, we'd like to have maybe certified copies of minutes, just so we can, or a letter or something, so that we can keep it with our, with our project here.
I would move that we authorize the Quabon Regional School District to begin solicitation of vendors to provide an after-school program at the Ruggles Lane School, effective September? September 2022.
I'll second that motion.
Very good. We have a motion, a second, to approve the request brought forward by the school. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I. While we have you here, we did have a letter from Jessica Bennett in regards to an April 6th meeting.
Yep.
And now, I guess it's being postponed till April 13th?
No, we have, we have one that's April 6th, and then there'll be another one April 13th, right? Just be...
That's more interesting.
They're doing a do-over of the one they, we went to last week, March 30th.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, as I've been trying to communicate with Ms. Bennett, there is no quorum of the very board, of Select Board, for that. And it's not posted properly, and there is no quorum listed for that. We have not discussed it at our board meeting. And she explained to me that both Dr. Marshall and Dylan had responded that they'd attend. However, Dylan will no longer be a board member after this evening, which means on the 6th, she has confirmation of one board member. And it's too late to post for the 6th. But we can discuss attendance and agree that we're going to attend the 13th. But we don't have the appropriate notification for anybody in our town that the board intended to appear anywhere for this. This was supposed to hit our agenda on the 21st, and it apparently did not. We did not have an opportunity to talk about it, and we have not talked about it. And other than seeing it come up in emails, you know, there's, there's been no public forum on this for people to know what we're doing, what we're planning to attend. And I'm very uncomfortable with that. You know, when we're talking about the school system and the use of buildings and where the kids are gonna go, I think the public generally have an interest in it. And I would, you know, feel like we're being completely untransparent with a meeting to occur with the four of Select Board members without us discussing it at our meeting. And at this point, we do not have a quorum for that day. So, I'm concerned that that meeting will be invalid. I'm sure that regional agreement required so we had these board members on there. And it's disappointing that it wasn't discussed properly. And, and we didn't get the quorum ahead of time. But I want to make sure that we discuss it this evening and that we assure we can be there with a quorum on the 13th. But this is really inappropriate notice to me to say, "Sure, I'll come and make a quorum for a meeting two days out."
I can just bring your concerns back, but this is well above my pay grade, so...
Jessica feels that if I agree tonight, we have technically 48 hours. What time does that meeting get underway on Wednesday?
Seven, six, 6:30.
6:30.
So, we'd be just under 48 hours leave of notice. It's just, it's, it's splitting hairs. So, I'm not comfortable to attend that one. And I'm not comfortable to give the town, you know, 47 and a half hours notice that we're gonna go attend a meeting. So, I'm putting that out there. That's, I don't think it's going to be a, a legal meeting. But if the lawyers or someone else says it is, that's fine. But now that we can talk about it here, I can assure you we'll gladly attend the meeting on the 13th.
Well, I mean, we could always say that we would, we would attend the meeting, that it would have to commence at or af- at or after 7:00 p.m.
Once again, we're splitting hairs.
Well...
This isn't even on our agenda to discuss. So, people don't know what we're talking about or why we're talking.
Well, I would just say it's so inconsequential to Barry because it's not even anything that affects us. But I hear, I hear what you're saying. It's splitting hairs, but I...
This is specifically about the New Braintree in OCAM schools, correct?
Correct. It's nothing to do with the Barry. It's just required under the, under the regional agreement that we would show up. And, and because if it affected us in any way, I could understand your concerns. And I appreciate, you know, what you're saying about the 47 and a half hours versus the 48. But I hate to hold up the entire district in the town of New Braintree and OCAM that need to make some decisions just because we're, I think, because this, I mean, we can certainly discuss it tonight under what I would call correspondence, Select Board reports. Because certainly, I know that there's a meeting. They've, they've requested from me. I know you've received an email. You've received emails. So, I mean, I would feel, no problem with discussing it and just indicating if we can attend, that we would not be able to attend and be a quorum until 7:00 p.m. I mean, if...
Once again, my, my extreme discomfort is the lack of notification to the people, you know, from our meeting that we are having this discussion right now. You know, I would think most people who are following the school committee in the school go to those meetings and attend them. Some people only listen to our meetings and try to get an idea of what's going on and take a cue from there. And they're missing that opportunity because it wasn't posted yet. If it's inconsequential, it may not matter anyways. They'll go forward with the meeting and it won't matter.
Well, no, no, because the regional agreement requires a quorum from every Select Board within the regional school district, which would mean all five towns. So, the meeting will not be held if we can't show. Correct?
Correct.
I mean, and I know how your, your schedules are crazy, and I think the other boards are available and are probably gonna be there. So, obviously, if we can't, if we can't manage that tonight in our meeting, we'll let the superintendent know immediately.
So, when I received notification from Jessica in this same email that the Select Board had received, I had gone forward and posted it because there is that 48-hour requirement. And, and that, that's what is required by the community, is to post the meeting 48 hours in advance.
Have you posted this one?
Yes, for 6:30 because that was the request, I understand, per the regional agreement with schools, that, you know, we need to be a part of this. And, you know, that was making the assumption that there was gonna be a quorum of, of the board. And in that event, that there isn't going to be a quorum of the board, then I guess, you know, we can take that posting down, but...
So, we did post it?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have...
Then if we posted it...
Yeah, so we don't have a quorum problem. I mean, a posting problem.
We don't have a posting problem. The question becomes the quorum. So, the public has been notified that there is a meeting happening on Wednesday and the Board of Selectmen is supposed to attend because that's required of our posting.
Then that means we're good. Does it not?
It means it's good as long as, at least, yeah, at least a quorum can show up to the meeting.
So, is it, is it your statement then, Jessica, that I'm required to attend because you posted it such?
The requirement of me was to post the meeting in order to meet the 48, at least 48-hour deadline. The quor- the question of a quorum is always, you know, if somebody can't make it. I mean, in the event that you were sick, you weren't able to make it, and then Dylan was sick tonight, and he wasn't able to make it, we wouldn't have been able to hold this Select Board meeting because we weren't gonna have a quorum, but it was still posted.
Well, according to the current CDC guidelines, I tested positive for COVID on Wednesday. That means Thursday is day one, Friday is two, Saturday, Sunday is three, four, Monday, today is five. So, I, since I am symptom-free, I am allowed to attend as long as I wear a mask. So, that was my concern. I only went through the, just a second. I'll take it to the... But that was one of the things I just finished looking up before I got online here, is what the exact requirement is. Because I took another test this morning. It still says positive.
Ooh.
But apparently, it's gonna do that for a while. But symptom-free, I can attend, and I will attend. But my concerns, I overheard and understood. And I don't want to hold up something that those towns want. Go ahead. Sorry.
So, just for your information, the board from the town of Hardwick all attended via Zoom last time. So, that is an option. We take, we take attendance verbally. We take votes verbally when people are on Zoom. In fact, we had school committee members who attended as well.
I hated it. I hated it. But tonight's technically my last day to stay quarantined before I can do anything with a mask on, so...
Just an option, an option if you feel better that way.
I would rather attend to 10, but...
Well, so if it's, if it's been posted, I mean, do, what, so we've fulfilled the requirement of it being posted. I think your issue of concern is, even though it was posted, it was not something that you knew about, and thus, you feel...
Not something we'd agreed to. I was concerned about this posting going in advance of our affirmation we're doing it, particularly because I was seeing... Um, particularly 'cause I was seeing it from the school committee's side. It was, I don't, I, I apologize. I don't know who Jessica Bennett's posting on behalf of. But seeing that posting come up on that end, when I'm, I'm saying, I never agreed to go to this. We don't have a quorum. I'm very concerned that it's misleading the public that we're attending as a quorum when we weren't. If Jessica says she's already posted this prior to 6:30, then we're good to go at 6:30, and I will be there.
Okay, I guess we're good.
Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Bye.
I'm sorry.
Feel better.
Not trying to cause trouble on ya.
That's okay.
They're used to it, right, Cheryl?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so you've done the fire chief contract, fire union contract.
Yeah, we're, we're.
All that already.
Yeah, our fire, the, the union contract, our attorney has approved it, reviewed it, been a participant in it. Uh, she indicated that her druthers was that we would wait for the, um, rank and file to ratify before we would formally ratify. So we have not come back into open session to ratify that contract, uh, for whatever legal reasoning she has.
It was the expectation that it was gonna be ready for tonight and that it was going to be ratified, um, but they just had one more, a, a couple little comments and adjustments, so it's not, um, ready for the Board's vote yet.
We, we, I mean, I, it must be inconsequential because the lawyer has no problems with it.
Right, everything is basically agreed upon. There is just a couple little language adjustments that they would like to, and one article that they would like to revisit. So, um, by next meeting, we will definitely be all set.
All right, have you covered the job description for a police lieutenant yet?
No.
Okay, have you all read that? Any thoughts on it?
Well, the thing that I would appreciate, and it's always helpful, to have the job description, um, sort of reviewed in person, maybe with the chief, so we could understand the, exactly what it means. Because there are things that I read in there and I go, oh, what does that mean? So I'm, I'm, I'm good, except I'd really prefer to have the job description reviewed. Either personally, I'll be happy to sit with the chief and go over it. Um, I doubt there were any significant issues. Are you all set with it, Greg? You, you have a little connect, you can't, I know you can't vote on it, but what did you think?
What? The lieutenant position is for the police.
Oh, oh, you're talking, oh, okay, sorry about that.
Right, so I, I would know, but I agree.
We have the chief here. We have, um, the acting chief here, so we can have a conversation about that.
Oh, is he there? I was gonna say, could you invite him in? He is there?
Yes, he is.
Yep.
Oh, great, sure, have him come on up and, and go through it. And, and just to say publicly, it's the intent, I believe, the Board hasn't made an official decision, but to drop the, the position of deputy chief in its stated lieutenant position, which is more fitting to the size of our community. Which is my idea. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you doing? How are you feeling?
Pretty good.
Excellent. Um, wanna run through this for us, please?
Sure, so I apologize, I wasn't prepared to, uh, to read it off, so I don't have a copy of it.
Oh, I, why don't you take that and I can move on with Dylan.
So basically, the lieutenant is gonna have, um, most of the same duties as the, the deputy chief would have had. Um, it is, uh, intended to be a, a position that's outside of the Union because the lieutenant's gonna handle any internal affairs investigation and a discipline, um, investigation side of it, uh, which is always helpful to have them outside of the Union for that.
Now, is it, is it appropriate that he be outside of the Union? Is that something the Union will complain about?
No, well, I've, I've already approached the Union and they have no issues with that.
Okay, 'cause he, does he have evaluative responsibilities as well for people who work within the organization?
Yes.
He does, okay.
So he's gonna be also responsible for, um, performing.
Some of that.
Reviews, performance reviews, as stipulated in the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay.
Um, and then forwarding the same to me for review. Um, so I'll just go over the specific duties. Coordinate private police duty with vendors, so he's gonna coordinate, uh, de, private details or police details, uh, with either, you know, whatever, whoever requires a, a, a police traffic detail. Even if it's not traffic, it could be security, something like that. He, he's gonna be responsible for that. Um, initiate through subordinates training programs for new recruits and continuous in-service training to be followed by members of the department. Uh, basically, what that means is he's going to oversee the field training program, um, as far as training new officers. But also, he's also going to monitor the state system. The, uh, state has a system called the CADIS in which every single officer is listed in the CADIS. And, um, administrators, both, both he and I are able to look at all the personnel and make sure that they're, they've met all of the training, uh, minimum training requirements for each year, 'cause every year that changes. Maintain training records goes right along with the above. Responsible for the grounds, I mean, that's just to make sure that the, uh, that headquarters is kept tidy.
Could I just ask on the very first paragraph? It says, "In addition to the duties of the police officer, the lieutenant assists and directs the activities of the police department." Um, so when you say assists, you mean you?
Correct.
Okay?
Yep.
And when appropriate directs? I would, I would say when appropriate, 'cause technically, your responsibility is to direct.
Correct.
When appropriate, you, you can say to him, you're gonna direct this activity, correct?
Correct, so if I, if, if in my absence, you know, I, I would, uh, instruct him.
Okay, so, so.
We can make that change.
Okay, so just says when appropriate directs the activities of the police. So that would be in your absence or when he, you, you say, please do this and, okay, got it. Everything else, um, you can.
You mean you might wanna take vacations?
If that's allowed.
We haven't decided that yet.
Or it could be even if, if I, if I was away at training or whatever.
Or even if you were sitting in your office doing something else that needed to be done, you could direct him to do whatever.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. Anything else with that first paragraph? I apologize, I should've started.
No, that's okay.
That paragraph. Yeah, in that first paragraph, it also states that he may be placed in charge of the department in my absence, um, under the administrative direction of myself, uh, performed in accordance with all orders and departmental rules, regulations and policies, and includes supervision of all personnel below him, basically. All right, back to the specific duties. Um, conduct regular uniform and equipment inspections to ensure understanding and compliance with department orders, regulations, standard operating procedures and other directives. So the lieutenant's gonna basically act as the patrol commander, which was the deputy chief's responsibility, um, which means he's responsible for how the patrol officers look. I mean, if he, if he sees a, an officer whose uniform is sloppy, dirty, not pressed, ripped, torn, you know, he's going to, uh, make sure that that gets rectified. Same thing, conduct regular inspections of departmental, department-issued property to include lockers and vehicles. Again, that's, uh, either duty equipment, weapons, um, the, uh, the lockers per our policy. The administration is allowed to inspect the lockers at any time, uh, vehicles as well, cruiser vehicles, not personally owned vehicles. Formulate prescribed work methods for all personnel with the approval of the chief of police. So he has some flexibility in being able to, again, as patrol commander, make, uh, recommendations to me for approval as far as, uh, patrol checks of a certain frequency or a certain area. Responsible for proven recording of the employee's attendance records, so he's going to basically review time cards at the end of each pay period to make sure that they're filled out correctly, they're filled out to the, um, level of detail that we require. And each officer, if they work an overtime shift or a detail, are required to get a supervisor's signature on that, supervisor's approval on that, and he'll go over and make sure that they do have supervisory approval before those are submitted. Review all use of force and pursuit reports for compliance with statute and policy. Again, that falls under the, uh, patrol commander, uh, vein, if you will. So anytime an officer is unfortunately required to use force, the supervisor of that shift is required to perform a use of force report, which the patrol commander reviews and then forwards to the chief of police for review. At the discretion of the chief of police, investigate complaints of misconduct by members of the department. Again, that goes under the internal affairs side of things. Conduct formal employee evaluations in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement and submit evaluations to the chief of police. So again, both those two bullet points are really why I think it's important to have a lieutenant outside of the Union. Serve as a liaison to the Rutland Regional Dispatch Center. Uh, so if, if there's any specific, um, equipment malfunctions or anything like that, again, as patrol commander, he would forward that to the director. Assist in the coordination of department goals, objectives and activities as a member of the management team. So again, he would be, uh, my right-hand man as far as working towards our five-year plan, uh, hopefully working towards accreditation. Form budgeting and fiscal, fiscal management tasks and other related duties is assigned by myself. So again, he would assist me in creating our budget. And there are also certain line items that I may have him monitor and keep track of throughout the year. Interprets and administrate, administrates provisions of the collective bargaining agreement. Again, a, a good thing to have him outside of the Union if he's, um, reviewing, uh, any issues that may, may arise if an officer has a question about the collective bargaining grant. Uh, interprets and applies departmental policies, rules and regulations, procedures. Again, so he's basically just making sure that all officers are adhering to the, uh, to the Berry Police Department manual. Recommends and assists in changes in policies and procedures. We, um, I'm a big believer in reviewing policies and procedures on a regular basis to make sure that they don't become stale. And especially with the new police reform, there are certain, there's certain language that we are required to have in certain policies and procedures. So he would just assist me in that. Uh, imposes or recommends formal discipline. That goes back to the internal affairs part of things. As assigned by myself, conducts or supervises subordinates in, uh, internal investigations. So if he has to have the detective look into something, he can, he can assign the detective to do so with my approval. Uh, attends meetings of various.
So is that, is that pretty much the same as at the discretion of the chief of police investigates complaints of misconduct by members of the department? Is that the same?
So will this bullet point more goes towards, he can, um, can, he can supervise subordinates and internal investigations? So, like I said, if, if I say to him, I want the detective to look into this, or I want the detective to review this footage regarding another member of the department, he can do so.
Okay.
Whereas the first bullet point just relates to me, um, instructing him to even open an investig, an internal affairs investigation.
Okay.
Uh, attends meetings of various towns, boarding commissions I've assigned if I, if I assign him to, to attend a meeting that I cannot attend. Participates in or directs staff meetings, so that would be department-wide meetings, and perform any and all duties as assigned by myself.
Gee, that's kind of an open thing, huh? That's one of the things that the Union would never allow you to put in a contract. Okay. Other than the, the thing when appropriate in, in that first paragraph?
Mm-hmm.
You know, the, I, I don't know if you wanna mention, is it, is it pretty much standard operating procedure that everybody knows what the patrol commander does and it needn't be described anywhere?
Right, and there's a, there's a, um, in a lot of the policies it, it states.
Patrol commander. So is there any type where you wanna indicate in here that he would, you know? You told us, but should you put it somewhere?
I probably should put it in.
That he would act when appropriate as, as the patrol commander?
Absolutely.
I don't know exactly where you'd wanna put it in, but, um.
I mean, we could just put it right under specific duties. Acts as patrol commander.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you for walking us through that.
Is there any requirements you have for training, education, years of service or such? That'll be a part of that or, or, or that be separate, you know? I don't hear anything about qualifications and who can apply for this position.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that would be under the, the job posting itself.
And what are you looking for, for that?
Um, I mean, I would, I would say that, uh, I'm looking for like a minimum of eight years, uh, full-time service, um, with at least two years of supervisory experience, if not more.
Supervisor being sergeant or better?
Yes, yep, sergeant or above.
Sound reasonable? So has, um, labor council looked at this yet or no?
Um, not yet.
So I, I, I don't have any problems with it. I don't know if either of you do, but certainly wanna have labor council, um, give it a read and make sure it's all good before we say, go ahead and make that the official title and description. Then we've, uh, removed, then at the time, we'd make a motion to remove the deputy chief position and description and insert the lieutenant at that time.
So you're saying that we do that, we do that at a later date after the attorney has an opportunity to review?
Right. Well, we could, we could do that now and, and, you know, we can always amend it if, if the labor council sees fit to amend it to. But this is the direction I'd like to see it go. I'd like to see lieutenant spot. Um, this is something the former chief did push for us for, was lieutenant spot, but I bet a deputy chief and lieutenant seemed very excessive for the size of the department we have. And I think this is more fitting for the size of the department than.
So are, are you seeking a motion that would, uh, say that the job description presented this evening by the acting chief would be forwarded along, um, to legal counsel for review?
Um, yes, but we can also, um, approve it and just modify it if the council has any recommendations. You see what I'm saying? I think it's a good description.
Yep.
I think it's a position we need. You know, it's up to us to form this position and remove the other position officially.
Right.
And you can do that, and if we're gonna go ahead and do that, we wanna go ahead and for now, instate this description. And it's always subject to change. You can change any job description at any time, but I would say, yes, you wanna forward to labor council um, just to verify that they don't recommend any changes in the deal before we leave the premises.
So, so the mo, the motion would be that we, um, do, do you wanna, at this point, indicate that we will be, um, re, you know, relinquishing a, or not having the position of deputy chief? But in lieu of that decision, we would be looking to create a lieutenant position? And that the job description presented this evening after the review of legal counsel will be, um, presented to the acting chief so he can advertise for the position?
Could be even simply, just simply a motion to, um, remove the position of deputy chief from the Berry Police Department.
Um, is that a motion?
Install a position of, and install a position of lieutenant to the Berry Police Department.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second it, the chair's motion, if that helps.
All right, so we have a motion to second to remove the position of deputy chief from the Berry Police Department and create a position of lieutenant in the Berry Police Department with the description noted here tonight. Any further discussion? Here we go, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, that being said, this position is not funded for this fiscal year. So let's, let's avoid that, please. Um, we should be putting this in the budget in your discussions of budget for next fiscal year. In the meantime, we'll get labor council to, to make a review and make sure it's already all right to run with that, uh, description as it is. And then we'll start working on the posting to put out someplace, I, I don't know when. I would hope we're gonna fund it at ATM. We need to start advertising.
I would.
Probably sometime late April, early, early, well, pardon me, mid-May, I would say, or late May, I would think.
So would the, uh, would the expectation be that, um, after the position is presented to the Budget and Finance Committee, recommended by, probably the Board, that, um, we would expect that this position is non-Union and thus the only requ-
but we're just having a, a moderate increase in the people I think will appreciate what they're getting for the money. Anyone have any questions on it or why I wanted it to go this way or?
No, seems reasonable.
Can be happy with that?
Yep.
If anybody has anything else, now's the time. If not, we can let the chief get back to his life and we'll continue on with all of the meeting.
Guess you can get back to your life. Thank you very much.
Hope for another half hour.
Okay, use of town property. You've already done those?
No.
We did the Lions Club.
We didn't know if you, if you had other conversations you'd like to have about the Chief Red Cloud visit.
I don't know. What's that chief?
It's just, it's actually the, there's a group of individuals coming to the Barry Muse, Founder's Museum, which is part of the Barry Library area, it's housed there. There are some Indian artifacts that are there, historic artifacts, and there has, has been a vote by the Board that we would begin a repatriation process on some of the items that are there, working with the Department of Interior as required. This is a group of people who want us to move with great haste on this repatriation issue. They wish we would move more quickly, and because it is a very complex operation that we have to move through, there's been some political or some pressure within newspapers and so forth that the, that the Founder's Museum has in the past, not really grappled with this repatriation in an honest and appropriate way. And so there, we are hosting, and I say we because I'm on, on the Board, we are hosting Chief Red Cloud, who is a member of, I believe it is the Lakota Tribe, and with some other people, resources, I think in the, in the state of Massachusetts, perhaps John Peterson, who is a part of the Native American, you know, agency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts maybe here. So they're going to be, you know, visiting the library and having an opportunity to chat with Board members. And then they wanted to have an opportunity to gather. They feel that there will be individuals from around the area that are interested in this that might be wanting to, they won't be able to attend, go through the museum, but they wanted to just sort of get together in a place so that they've asked for the use of town property and, on the, on April 6th, and they've done the appropriate paperwork. I don't know how many people we would, they would expect. I mean, anybody in the room and anyone hearing this is invited to attend from what I understand from the people who are gathering. And so that's, that's about the, I don't know, there's an article in the Telegram and Gazette today, there was an article, I think, in some other publications, of Native American publications and so forth. It appears, and I, and I'd say this with some level of ignorance because I'm not sure exactly, but it appears that the, that the Indian exhibit that we have in the Founder's Museum is quite extraordinary. And obviously, we're excited to look at the repatriation that we were, were responsible for, you know, moving forward on. And I guess about 20 years ago, there was a similar issue and some repatriation was handled, but not to the degree that the tribes were interested in. So at any rate, that's what it's all about, and it should be an interesting time, while maybe a controversial time for some people who feel that the, that the stuff in the library, museum is really the town of Barry's and other people who say it should have been repatriated years ago. So there'll be that little bit of a squabble, I think, of people, you know, if you read the town forum, you read people saying, "Give it back, it's ours," you know, that sort of thing. So that's what it's about, and it really is an opportunity for kind of an exciting time in the town of Barry to really grapple with a very, very important issue and to, to give the public an opportunity to understand that that Founder's Museum is quite the place. And I say that only because it's, I'm brand-new to me, and I'm just getting sort of the foundation information, and I'm pretty amazed at what, what we have there.
So the Indians want to take possession of these items to?
Yes, yeah. Well, with the thing, yeah, it's a very complicated procedure, repatriation, and, and what happens is the Department of Interior has a whole section of its workforce that deals with this. So they will be walking the library, you know, leadership through the process, which will take needless months and years because they want to make absolutely sure that the ghost shirt that is available there is actually belongs to a particular tribe. Because what happens is, I guess, people show up and say, "That's ours," and the other tribe is saying, "That's ours." And so one thing we know, it's not ours, but it's impossible for us to decide whose it is, but it is not impossible for the Department of Interior with all of their resources to help us decide that. So people have to understand that such a thing as artifacts, historic artifacts, need not be repatriated. Things that have religious and/or spiritual issues of concern, those are things that have to be identified, and then the Department of Interior and its associates help us figure out to whom they should be repatriated, and the things that are historic artifacts can remain in the library. So it's going to be, you know, I would say, a couple of years' process, but they at least are having a gathering, and we certainly welcome them to, to our community.
Very good. Look for a motion then.
I move we approve this request to use town property on April 6th for Mia Ferlento and the new Observations Magazine at the Town Hall.
Second?
Motion to second to approve use of town property for Chief Henry Red Cloud. You have any further discussion? Such as fees?
What?
What? Oh, I, I don't, fees, did we?
Oh, fees. Yes, if they're a nonprofit, it's a $50 fee, and if it's for profit, there's a $100 fee, and I would recommend that the town collect their fee on this.
Yeah, I, I don't know if they're a nonprofit or not, so we can find that out.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll leave that alone then.
Yeah.
And we'll see where the fee falls.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Call for victory license for Captain Tees, is that done?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Snow and ice deficit spending approval. Can't imagine we've been saying insulting much lately.
Not lately, but we did go over budget. There's a current deficit of $25,000, about $25,000, so we do need to approve deficit spending. I would recommend $30,000 because I'm hopeful that we will not need to spend any more out of that account.
Where's our deficit in the labor or in the old time or in the actual materials?
Let me revisit that really quick. The wages.
It isn't the wages. So hopefully we have materials, and if we don't have any substantial events, seems like every time we say that, we get something, but let's hope we don't.
Right.
Has the Finance Committee had a chance to approve us on this number?
No.
I believe we're, I believe we're supposed to get their approval before authorizing the overcheck.
Could we, could we move to authorize the deficit spending after receipt of approval by the Budget and Finance Committee?
You could.
Then that would be a motion?
I would second that motion.
Motion to second to approve $30,000 overspending for the ice and snow and ice deficit, assuming approval by, or after approval by the Finance Committee. Do you have any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Now that I'm looking back at the budget to see whether it was wages or the snow removal, on the next item, the expense line is over expended by $60,000, so we will need an approved, a deficit approval for that account, too.
Wait a minute, so we need $80,000?
Ninety.
Ninety.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
So that was the snow and ice wages we need to do material.
Yep, so the $30,000 goes towards the overtime, part-time costs, and then the snow removal account, which is the other expenses, is over expended by $60,000.
Okay, so the total is 90?
Correct.
Okay, I thought the total was going to be 120. Okay. Do we want to just change the motion?
Let's do another motion, because we, we already covered that and said it was for the labor side.
Okay.
So it was specified towards labor, so we can go ahead and authorize the $60,000 of the over to the materials.
And make a motion to authorize that we?
Pending that.
Yeah, pending the approval of the Finance Committee, that we authorize deficit spending of $60,000 for materials utilized for snow and ice removal.
Second.
Get motion to second to approve the $60,000 overage in expense for snow and ice material, pending approval by the Finance. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Greg, is, is that something that Jessica will take care of with the Finance Committee? Present this to them, and then they'll give us a vote, and we can move on? Because they, they meet tomorrow night?
Next week.
Next week? Okay.
I can't tell what she's saying. I assume she's confirmed she will.
Yes, they meet next week, so that's when we will address the issue.
And make sure it's addressed, please.
Yeah, and we'll talk about it at our Finance meeting.
Building inspector contract renewal. Do we have any concerns, questions? Will I just offer him a renewal? I assume, I would assume he's going to accept.
This involves other towns, right?
Right, so this is the intermunicipal agreement. This is not a employment agreement with the current employee. So the purpose of this agreement is to provide the shared building inspection services to, to the towns that are involved, which are Barry, Hardwick, New Braintree, and Petersham. So I was going, what? Go ahead.
Is this an annual review we do in this contract?
No, this is a three-year contract, so it's up for renewal at the end of this year. And we can, we can extend it with annual renewals for a period of 25 years.
Jeez.
I, yeah. I do think, I do think that we should probably revisit this agreement because there's a lot of things based off of my, yeah, I wasn't here when this agreement was originally negotiated, and I know that, like, for example, the Oversight Committee hasn't met since, I don't know if they've ever been formed, and this should have been done back in 2019. So there's just some, some things that we should revisit on this, and also I received a letter late on Friday from the town of New Braintree saying that they may be interested in looking for other services, but then I also received a communication from another community saying that they may be interested in joining our agreement. So, you know, there's some conversations that I, I'm starting to have on that level, and I will share the, the letter from New Braintree with all of you. I'm just trying to craft a response to them because they had, you know, some concerns that I think merit further conversation, but none that should be talked about in open session at this time. So I think that the building inspector contract needs a little bit more of a deep dive, but I wanted to put it in front of all of you, so if you guys had any suggestions, observations, or whatnot, that you guys could, could come to the table with your suggestions.
I would suggest polling the other town administrators, gauging their satisfaction with the services, and gauging, you know, the ability to take on the town.
Right.
How many hours you're going to need, and if, if the inspector feels that's reasonable, or if that means adding assistance to do it, which changes the whole problem.
Right. But if we lose a town and gain a town, it might also be somewhat of a wash.
Who's the other town that's interested?
Hubbardston.
Oh, it's awfully big compared to New Braintree.
New Braintree, right. So there are some adjustments that we're going to have to make here, and I want to, you know, further investigate some of the concerns that New Braintree brought to my attention on Friday, and hopefully, you know, we can work out some of those concerns.
Well, and the concerns are either the concerns with personnel or concerns with the way in which the organization is structured. So they're really two different areas. So if it's an issue about how the contract or this agreement is structured, that's something that obviously, meeting with the other, you know, administrative assistants can look at and move on from there.
Right.
It's two, really, two different issues of, I don't know what New Braintree's issue is, so.
Yeah, I think it's more along the lines of personnel, but.
Personnel, okay.
Well, in either event, it's probably going to take place in executive session. If we're talking about restructuring a contract, even though it's with other municipalities, we have the right to strategize in private.
Yes.
Yep.
Information of that, and if it's a personnel review, obviously, it's going to happen.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we will deal with that on another day, table it for now. No action to really take. Any other business to bring up right now?
Do you want a?
Ambulance.
Do you want a motion to table that?
Nope.
Okay.
It's not going to take any action on it.
Okay.
We discussed it, which is fair enough.
We still have the MOA for the ambulance service for Hardwick.
New Braintree.
Is that where it is?
It was actually listed right before.
The ambulance contract renewal.
Yes, so the Fire Chief and I, we've, you know, obviously with the Fire Department Union and his contract and, you know, everything, we've been focusing a lot on, on our contracts with New Braintree and Hardwick as well. And part of the Fire Chief's proposed budget is to provide a better service across all three communities, as well as increase the department's ability to furnish more emergency calls. One of his proposals includes increasing staff, full-time staff members at the department, and with that, there's obviously an increased cost, but there's, with that investment, there's also an increased return on that investment with an increased billing revenue that we can get from servicing more calls. So we are recommending, we're, we're having conversations among us about increasing the, increasing, what do I want to call it?
The fee?
The fee, that, yes, the fee is such a simple word. Increasing the fee to Hardwick to potentially $30,000 to $40,000. There is another concern that the Fire Chief has with Hardwick's decision to move away from Ware. It was a mutual decision between Ware and Hardwick that Hardwick would seek out another service for the other half of Hardwick. So there's going to be, you know, potentially some increased cost to the Barry Fire Department on that end, but also just to help offset some of the increased costs that we have for two additional staff members. We propose an increase to that fee, and in New Braintree, we looked at more of a gradual increase in the fees, so keep it at $15,000 for this year and then adjust it to $17,500 for the remainder of the two years of the contract.
Does this mean that the number of visits to Hardwick exceeded what they told us it would be?
So the Fire Chief is still waiting for the year to finish out, for him to understand the impact to his department. with Hardwick's decision to move away from Ware. It was a mutual decision between Ware and Hardwick that Hardwick would seek out another service for the other half of Hardwick. So there's going to be, you know, potentially some increased cost to the Barry Fire Department on that end, but also just to help offset some of the increased costs that we have for two additional staff members. We propose an increase to that fee. And in New Braintree, we looked at more of a gradual increase in the fees. So keep it at fifteen thousand dollars for this year and then adjust it to seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for the remainder of the two years of the contract.
So...
Does this mean that the number of visits to Hardwick exceeded what they told us it would be?
So the Fire Chief is still waiting for the year to finish out, for him to understand the impact to his department. One of the biggest issues that we had, though, is that we were not... In the beginning of the contract, for several months, there was some issues with dispatch in New Braintree, since they are, yeah. The State Police dispatch in New Braintree, they weren't dispatching the right department for the right calls. So we are unsure of how those numbers affected, you know, if, if we were given too high of a estimate or too low of an estimate for Hardwick. We really won't know until next year, now that all of those issues are sorted out.
I will take a moment to point out now, that as I requested in the last generation, that there will be a clause in there, if they exceed a certain number of calls, there will be a fee per call. It was not added to this, and if we're doing it, we're just getting burned. I wanted this in the contract last time. We've got to make sure that it's addressed in the contract this time.
Well, right, my understanding right now is that we are below the calls that we were expected to receive.
Well, that'll be all right then. That was my concern. And I just want to make sure it is covered within the contract, or I will hold the contract up this time. Anything else for that?
Not at this point.
So if there's nothing to really do at this point, we're waiting for more information and reviews, that sort of, more than I pay.
But I, but I agree with the Chair that this probably should be something that we do in executive session when we get to that point?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. It's so weird, Greg, talking to a blank screen up there that's you.
I know, it's getting darker in here.
It is.
My house is old. I have one good outlet in this room.
I got it.
And it's twelve feet from where I sit. So I have an extension cord to keep my computer plugged in, so it doesn't die on me.
Okay.
Which means I can't plug the dang light in. I can do the old band, but it's not very bright. So as I knew as it got dark, I'd unfortunately go dark. It is what it is. I do not have a modern home. I have an eighteen thirty-seven. It's old.
I, I think we have...
We will keep driving forward. What do we got next? We got to go down to...
Minutes.
...the approval?
I, I move approval of the March seventh amended executive session minutes, though not for release, but for approval.
Now, these the ones that I asked be amended?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I was not at that meeting, so I abstained from seconding for that one.
Thought, but you are on seconding. Want me to second?
I am abstaining from this one, because I was...
Okay, so I'll second that. The motion is second to approve March seventh amended executive session meetings, but not for release. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Then we'll have March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, open meeting minutes.
Okay, I move approval of the March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes for, look for approval?
A second.
Motion is second to approve March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, open meeting minutes and, and the release. Any further discussion of those? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And find the executive session on March twenty-first. This would have been for your Fire Chief contracts, correct?
Yeah.
I move approval of the executive session minutes from March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, not for release.
I second.
I have a motion to second to approve but not release executive session minutes from March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain. Correspondents? Who would like to read that for us? The Houston's dog letter?
Oh, I, I, I've read it already, but if you, I'm not into the record. I'll read it into the record for you. It's a...
Please.
It's an individual, Joseph T. Jalbert, Valley Road. I would like to request a hearing on a dog that nonstop barks. I have been in touch with Jen from Animal Control many times, and she recommended to have a hearing with the Select Board to try to come to a resolution to this problem. I also checked with Town Clerk's office, and the dog in question is not registered with the town. The dog resides at one six oh Valley Road, and I believe that the dog's owner is Maggie Buttram. Thank you for your time on this issue. Signed by Joseph Jalbert.
Very good. So we would need to give... Jessica, you know how much notice we need to give those people before we have a hearing on this?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. So...
At our next meeting.
Two weeks' notice will come around the next meeting.
Actually, it, it will, because our next meeting's on a Tuesday due to the holiday.
Oh, very good then.
So I can get the letter out tomorrow morning and...
I make a motion, we direct, we direct Jessica to get that letter out for notice to the people and arrange the hearing, also notify the dog officer, and verify with the town clerk if there is, is not an animal registered at that address.
Second that motion?
Motion is second to direct the town administrator to get this hearing ready and get with the clerk and the dog officer, as well as notify the people. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Please include in that a notice to the correspondent of the meeting date and time, so they can attend as well.
Of course.
Select Board reports?
I have nothing.
Yeah, I'll say that it's been a pleasure working on this board and working with all of you and, and the community. And it's been, it's been an interesting three years, and I look forward to continuing to stay active in the community going forward.
Thank you, Dylan. It's been a pleasure working with you. And hopefully, we'll get someone else on that continues to care about the community as the rest of this board does. It's always very important. You will be missed, and we wish you well.
You certainly will be missed. We're sorry that you didn't decide to take out papers or bring, return them. I did, I know you took out papers. But at any rate, maybe next time.
They have an annual election for a reason.
They do, indeed.
So there's a lot of years left in my life, and...
Okay.
Very good. I guess that brings us to our town administrator report.
Yes. Greg, you didn't have anything for tonight?
I, I do not.
Okay.
You know, the dog issue will be up. We can't discuss it otherwise. My concern, I already discussed it in the school letter. That's really all we have for relevance for right now.
Okay, great. So thank you, Dylan. It's been a pleasure working with you. And it'll be, you know, interesting. This is two years in a row. We're going to have a change-up on the board. So, you know, really exciting to help the new board members learn. And for me to learn about the new board members, you know, kind of goals and aspirations and what motivated them to get on the Select Board. So I appreciate, you know, you for your service, Dylan, and I'm looking forward to working with whomever gets elected tonight. In about twenty, twenty-four minutes, we should know who, who our next Select Board member will be. So it's been a pretty busy couple of weeks with the couple of resignations that we've had, having to go through some hiring conversations with the library trustees and working with the interim treasure collector service. I would like the board to revisit their decision from last meeting on posting for the treasure collector position, just because in my conversations with this current interim service, there is, you know, some, some significant work that needs to be done. And, you know, hopefully, within the next two months, they can, they can help clean it up. But really, their motivation is to create a day-forward strategy, which I really think is unique and different from the last firm that we used. The last firm was strictly, you know, an interim service, whereas this firm is focusing on how we can make our processes in the department better. And that's not something that can be rushed. So I just don't think that it would be who of us to look for hiring a full-time position within the next couple of weeks or interviewing for that person. Today, as I mentioned, we could have a new candidate within the next twenty-three minutes. So that means that you do have twenty-three minutes left to go vote, if you have not already. And other than that, I've been working diligently on the contracts. So the Fire Chief's contract, you know, luckily, we were able to clean that up tonight. And also, the Fire Union, that was a pleasure getting to negotiate their first contract. I think that they were very fair, and they did keep in mind the community's ability to, to fund, you know, what they're requesting. So I really think that they were more than reasonable with their requests and, and more than understanding of our capacity to fulfill our request, to fulfill their requests. Something else that the board may have seen recently is that I sent out to all department heads a ARPA request form. Now that we have, we understand that the, the federal government's guidelines have changed on how we can use ARPA funds. I wanted to revisit the department's needs, so I sent out a comprehensive spreadsheet asking departments to kind of give their project, a description of the project, what some estimates of the costs are going to be. And then my goal is to compile that by mid-April and then have a community meeting, you know, separate from a Select Board meeting, but hopefully, just a, a community meeting where everybody can discuss just these ARPA requests and the community can be involved in discussing, like, what they want to see on the community side. And I also encourage, you know, the Select Board members... Dylan, sorry, you were included on that email, but you probably shouldn't add your two cents, but you'll be invited to the community meeting. But for Maureen and Greg, you know, you guys should, should feel free also to kind of put in any ideas that you may have on how ARPA could be best spent in the community as well. So I'm hoping maybe first week of, first or second week of May, give the new Select Board member time to acclimate to our board and then get into the discussions on what we're going to spend ARPA money on. And, you know, then we can go from there. Other than that, and, and the ambulance contracts, the Fire Chief and I went and we met with Hardwick last week to start discussing, you know, their new agreement with the Westbrook Field Rescue and then moving forward with our ambulance agreement. So it's just that time of year where all of the contracts are coming up. The budget is underway. And for the next meeting in April, I will have a, a complete budget to the Select Board to review.
Good. In regards to holding off on treasure collector position, you know, I know nothing of this outside group, and I know nothing of the changes they want to propose for our department. So I'm not going to assume that they know better than us and they're going to instill changes that we want. So I would still like to move forward and get the treasure collector in there, you know, as soon as we reasonably can do so. And they can work with this office we've hired and decide if that's the way we want to go or not. But we can then have a discussion between, like, the treasurer we want to have and, and that interim department, and decide which way we want to go with those things. I don't want to start making sweeping changes to things because an interim department has said they think it's best.
Greg, I would just, I would just say that I've been working with, as you know, the Finance Team since the beginning of the year, as we shift to a new software program, after a number of years where that has been recommended and urged by our auditing firm. The auditors are finishing up their work. We're rolling over in VEDAR. So I would just tell you that the need for us to follow accurate and responsible accounting procedures, which has not been the practice, okay, in our offices for the last eighteen months, is essential to rolling this VEDAR program over by July one in effective way. So what, what we, what we want to do is we want to have a treasurer candidate know that they are coming into an organization, unlike what happened to the last person, where cash is reconciled, where we know what the accounting responsibilities are under, under VEDAR. What are the new responsibilities in all of our, you know, our programs centers about using VEDAR? Because that is critical. To just hire some treasurer to walk in the door and say, oh, by the way, we haven't reconciled cash. We haven't, we had somebody in here for a while, but here, here you go. That's what we did the last time, and it was a colossal disaster. I, I implore you to contemplate utilizing this, this, you know, service until we have all the ducks in the row, till the auditors can look at our progress and say, you are on track. You have done it. And then we bring in the person in, not to play catch-up, but to hopefully begin to manage our community the way the auditors and, you know, reasonable financial, you know, people would say in the state we're supposed to do. So I really don't, I mean, we can start looking in May, and hopefully by July, we'll have the opportunity to offer a position to a, to a new person in a job that will be sought after, not a job to come in and fix the mess, but to understand we've taken care of that. And now we look forward to moving in the right direction with a, with competent staffing. Our, our staff is getting so much training, working with these people. The few meetings that I've had with some of the people who are working with this service, they have said, we couldn't be happier. This is amazing. We're finally getting our work done. So I really implore you to think about what, you know, the timeframe in hiring a new treasurer. I, I understand we need to have somebody certainly ready to go in, you know, by early July. And so if we start looking in May and we have the capacity to even have some of those people who are, you know, highly skilled in this area to sit in and evaluate resumes with us and also to sit, sit with us during some of those interviews, because they can ask questions that we might be able to ask, but they really know the answers. They can tell if someone has VEDAR experience and can roll over our accounts in July with, you know, being effective. They know our mistakes of the past, and they know how we can not make them again. So I implore you not to rush into this, but to give us time to really get all of our ducks in a row and to be a place where people would seek to be our treasurer, not people who would say, you haven't reconciled cash for eighteen months? Well, look at your audit reports. Oh, my God. I mean, so I really...
Dr. Marshall, but before we go on this topic much longer, we're beating a dead horse here. I understand your, your position. But what I suggested is I want to continue with the hiring process, and we want to find someone. We already discussed at the last meeting that we're not likely to put someone in place until after July first, because they're going to be walking out in another town. We already understand that. But to start looking and interviewing and finding people that are interested in that position until July first, we do need to start looking now.
Well, I just...
We've already talked about also making sure we keep them from an overlap of this company. So I thought we'd already pretty much decided that.
Okay, well, then, well, then, well, then I misunderstood your position on this, because your, the position you just reiterated would be my position, that, yeah.
Yes, but I want to get going on finding a, a person to fill the position.
Oh, I, I want to...
I don't expect them, like you said, I don't expect them to walk in here with two weeks left in the fiscal year and take over. I, I don't think that's reasonable. But we, you know, if somebody was available, they could come in and see what's going on and learn for a couple of weeks before the end of fiscal year.
Well...
The, the goal is better.
Well, my, my, my goal, my goal is to fix, fix where we've been, because it has been a terribly rocky road.
Right.
And we need to, we need to make sure that we are ready to offer the position and that we understand the kind of qualities that person needs to have to accept and to manage the position that we have. That's my concern. And I agree with you that we may have to have an overlap period where we have some support for this person as they come in. My hope would be we'd get someone who had a really strong skill set, which who didn't have to do teaching on job. But, yeah, I don't care if we advertise it. I just don't think we should rush in and say, oh, okay, you can, you can, you can start.
Until we advertise.
Exactly.
You don't know if we're going to find, you know, if you find, someone says, I want to start tomorrow. You say, well, we're really, really looking for tomorrow. And we, we go that way. But most likely, we're going to find something that is looking at, that understands that they're looking for after the first.
Yeah. Here's my, here's my...
And that gives us time to find that out and work it out.
Here's my fantasy, Greg. The people who are working with us now, the people, okay, from outside of our district, the people who work with our auditing team out of, out of Powers and Sullivan, all of those people know people. And I want them to feel comfortable in saying to other people who might be looking, hey, look at Barry. They have done all of this work. They are ready to fly. And so we just have to... And so, we just have to make sure we give, um, the, an appropriate amount of time to, to get a person, but to make sure when we welcome them in, we're ready. I think we're saying the same thing, but I just-
We are, I, I, I agree with that, I'm not looking to pick someone up in two weeks and start them here. We, we realize that, you know, we were hoping to have some names in and start looking at people, and, and maybe by the end of April or the May, start, start an interview process. But if, if you think that's gonna be too early, then, then we can pump the brakes, and we can talk to people that have applied already, or we can pump the brakes and, and do it a, a little bit later than now, or just continue the advertising. You know, if you open the advertising for, for months, I think that's kinda, you know, overkill with people, too. They, they see it's always out there, they just feel like, "Oh, hey, they're always looking," you know?
Well, I, I would, I would say we have our, we have a reputation that precedes us. We need to make certain that that reputation is put to bed.
Fair enough. So, what are you proposing, if anything?
I, I have, I have no problem with, uh, you know, sort, after our next meeting to begin to post and advertise, uh, understanding that we are looking for a person ready to start uh, after, uh, you know, maybe after April first, I'm sorry, after July first or, or the fifteenth, 'cause if they're leaving another job, it's important that they can close out where they are and then begin their work with us, and we will have everything, the i's will be dotted, the t's will be crossed, and they will be able to come into this job and understand, "Okay, you're not fixing anything, you're moving us forward," and, um-
And when, when, when should the software program be independently running?
It should be independently running by the fifteenth, of course, we'll have to close out twenty twenty-two, and we have to, you know, be ready for twenty twenty-three. So, I'm thinking that's a very busy and hectic time for our fa- finance people, is that, uh, month of July. You know, they're waiting for revenues to come in, as you know, they're waiting for, you know, the, the school to pay its assessment, or us to pay the assessment to the schools. And so, those are the big things in Ja- in July that have to happen. But imagine, starting a, a fiscal year in the, in Barry, Massachusetts, where the cash is reconciled, will be a new experience for us, one that I'm-
Be nice.
Yeah, and, and-
But what I'm saying is-
The people who are tired to get there.
The new, the new software is already in place, is it not?
No, 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 all of the accounts perceivable, all of that information is now being put in. We're running, we'll be running pretty soon two charts of accounts, because we're making the chart of accounts that we currently have, maybe isn't perfect, so we have to align with Commonwealth. So, all of that creation of new chart of accounts is taking time.
Right.
This is my question, when, at what point will we drop to one software?
Um, July fifth, well, we, we'll, we'll still be running to close out twenty-two on the old software, we'll be running, we'll be running two systems for at least two weeks in July.
As long, right.
So, the goal is to really not implement the, the new software fully until the fiscal year?
Well, it's not the, it's not the goal, it's the only way you can do it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay?
Fair enough.
I mean, our, our accounts people have really, are really working hard, this is a lot of work for them, and the, the people we've got in that are helping and assisting, and it, it's been, it's been, let's face it, people are applauding the fact that, uh, they're having the opportunity to finally make this all work, so, I've never seen them so happy.
I have this impression that we'd have this software up and running sometime in, in May or June.
Oh, no.
And it'd be independent beyond the one system, so-
No, no.
Uh, I have not realized that we're gonna be on, you know-
Two systems.
Keeping the old system through the fiscal year-
Yep.
And then begin using the new, it's already installed, they'll learn it, but begin using the new system exclusively, the new fiscal year.
They're actually, they're actually doing a little of both systems already, 'cause they're building a whole new chart of accounts, so, it's a lot of work.
I understand, and that makes sense, it makes for a smoother transition, I understand. Very good. Anything else anyone has before we move on again?
I, I just move we go into executive session for the purposes of conducting strategy and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the chief of police.
Second that.
Motion is second to go to executive session, wait, executive session to negotiate for chief of police? Any further discussion before we move, move into vote? Here now, I'll call for a vote, roll call, please.
Marshall, yes.
Clark, yes.
And then Sullivan, yes. These two remember to not cut me off, the zoom, you shut zoom down.
Sure.
You say that.